No, this isn't the seat. Oh, it is.
No, it's not. This is the budget workshop.
It's not.
You're on a show.
There's some stuff from the.
Yeah.
We'll show everything.
All right, yeah.
It's this one.
Yeah. There's some stuff on there.
I know.
Ready? All right, make sure everybody's mic is on. I'll call the meeting in order. We can stand for the pledge while my moment of silence. Pledge.
To the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which we stand. One nation of the God. And it is possible with the.
Can you handle the roll call?
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Walter.
Here.
Commissioner Bonnet.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Alguier.
Here.
Chairman Yor.
Here.
All present.
All right. Thank you. Do you have approval of the agenda? Any additions or conclusions?
Can we confirm the agenda? I'm sorry.
Will you approve the agenda as presented? Motion's supported. Discussion. Not all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Great seven zero. Public comment? Amy.
I just want to be sure that everyone knows. We need the budget workshop streamed live. We're all about being transparent. Let's be transparent. That's all.
All right. Any other public comment? Mr. White.
Hi, Jim White from Suttons Bay. I wanted to just say that I've been following the proceedings that have been going on around the budget since they started. And I have to say that on the basis of what I've seen and what I've heard. My constituents is Republican Party membership and other people in this county who are taxpayers of this county. Aren't exactly pleased by what they're seeing. Okay, and the last time we had, you guys had a meeting. There was some undertones that I. Tell you that my constituents don't like it either. Bottom line is that we expect to see some significant, we being the constituents, I'm speaking for it. This is just not me personally. Would like to see this county taking some significant steps to reduce spending over time, not continuing to increase it. I'd like to see that happening in this proceeding if that's at all possible. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? Yes, sir.
David Keyes, Suttons Bay Township. I would just like to know, this is a budget meeting, okay? All you people, the board members up there, I want to know, do you all know what a budget means? What I've seen prior to this board here, the one before, I don't think they did. I mean, they spent like drunken soldiers. That's why we're headed for a deficit. So know what a budget means. Stay within your means, not coming to us and draining our checkbooks. And that not only comes from me, it comes from a lot of people I talked to at Suttons Bay Township, Leonard Township. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, thank you. Next up for two commissioner comment. Commissioner comment?
Yeah, I would like to say that. That we were sent the motion that was approved in 2021 by, by the commission. Four of the members from that commission are here on this board. And we have ignored that completely. I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't livestream, but what I'm saying, we have to go through the proper procedure. It should have been a motion, it should be discussed, and then it, by a vote of this board be approved, and then we livestream. Until then, we overturn that motion, that we have, we should follow that. I mean, and that, that has always been, if the board makes a decision, until it's overturned by another board, that decision holds. So I would say that we need to stop. If we're going to follow our rules and our procedures and our protocol. We need to turn off the streaming until it comes to this board, it's approved, and we say we want to livestream. Otherwise, you know, I, I would say that otherwise we're giving one commissioner the, the, the authority to override a previous commission. And I don't think that that should be allowed, ever allowed. And I also say then, if, if, if one person can change our agenda and add things to it. Then how come we had, after a moment of silence, we don't have private prayer on this agenda? Because it's on all our other ones. Yet it's not on there because it was approved by a different commission that had said that. But when we went through our organizational meeting, we, we had the option to add this to the livestreaming to any other agenda. It's always been, it's been on these three. It's not been on any others. It hasn't been on the committees. It hasn't been on anything else. It is recorded and it is put on. So we are, are being transparent. But what we're not doing is we're not following the normal protocol for how things are done. We're allowing one commissioner to, to make decisions for us and, and it bothers me that. Our, our chairman and our administrator allow it to happen and didn't stop that. And when I objected. Well, I don't feel like, I know that we are not following the rules. We, we are not, we're, we're not understanding. What the commission's authority or a commissioner's authority is. So I would ask that we stop the streaming now, and if we want to do it, then we discuss it here on our board and we vote to do it. But otherwise. Wait, until we have approved it as a board.
Any other, Mr. Comments?
Yeah, Bill. Can we vote on it now? I mean, how, is that out of place?
Yeah, suspend your rules.
Well, I, I would make a motion that we suspend our rules. And. And we authorize livestreaming our budget sessions.
Right, motion four, it's been supported. Motion, it can't be considered at the same time. You have to suspend the rules. Then you have to have a motion to take the. Issue up that would require the suspension of the rules.
So you're, you're saying that I opened my mouth for too long?
No, 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 no.
I, I would, I would motion that we suspend the rules.
So we, so we already have a motion on the board, we gotta draw your motion.
I would draw my motion.
All right, so you have, so now your motion is to suspend the rules.
Suspend, to suspend the rules.
All right, Mr. Bonnet. All right, any discussion on that motion?
Motion is not debatable.
Oh, motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. All right, all in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries seven zero.
I would motion that we livestream our budget work sessions.
Sir.
All right, movement's supported. Discussion.
Yeah, I, you know, I initially objected to it because, because of how we were putting it in place. And also because I didn't, you know, I, I didn't want it to be. I noticed that when we had ever, whenever we broke for a, a. Arrest. People would come and be talking either to me or to the administrator. So I know employees were watching it livestream. And I do think that happens in here quite a bit. And so work is either not getting done or it's, it's not being fully looked at. But I've been, I've talked with the administrator about it and he's assured me that he's going to look into it and try to make sure that that does not happen. So I, then I'm fine with what we're going to do.
Can I just take clarification? I just want to make sure that you set aside the board rules and the only thing you're streaming is budget work sessions.
Adding to what we've done. The, our previous policies on streaming continue. We're adding to that our budget work sessions.
Okay, I just want to make clarification because your previous live streaming are executive special session and. Executive board. So you're adding budget work sessions. So no committees. I just want to make sure I'm getting this correct because you're setting your rules.
That's all I.
Just budget work sessions. Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Alguier.
So I've always heard that women have the ability to do something that's tougher for them and that is multitask. I am very, very confident that somebody could have our meeting in the background. In their office. And if there's something of import, they may pay attention for a few minutes. But that they're going to be able to get their job done. Even because I know. I would say, well, I'll listen to it tonight. Chances are doing that are slim to none. But I would rather our employees be informed and have the ability to check in than be blocked out. Anyway, people are multitasking even if it's been a necessary years. It's no big deal.
Robbins.
The issue I see is, I'm talking on past experience. I don't have a problem with elected, they're right to, they're department heads. They're chief deputies, but when it comes to employees, they're here to do a job. They want to know what's going on. They can watch it just like everybody else at the end of their day. Because the problem I have from past experience. Is getting taxes from employees, why are RP's going on, how to vote, or what to say.
Ignore them.
I do, but still, that's inappropriate. It'll. And they're, and they got a job to do and I think that's what they need to do and. They can watch it at the end of the night or talk to the department heads or the chief deputy or if you like the person.
Any other discussion? All right, Mr. Bonnet.
Yeah, I would, I would just say that, that the clerk was correct in saying that we were not supposed to be livestreaming. And I, I do, I do think that, you know, we always see that with the, with the. What the commissioners voted on in 2021. And so when she brought that up, I think that that, she was correct in saying that we shouldn't be livestreaming it. So I also just wanted to note that.
Any other discussion? I guess I'll just make these statements here. I don't like, for us to, I don't think it's appropriate for us to sit here at a board. State that, you know, we don't approve of certain individuals watching because I feel like as a board, we're, our administrators are employed and nobody else is. And I just don't feel like it's important for us to micromanage beyond outside of that. So. That's something I, I've been. Term on, I think from the beginning, that I don't want this board to go outside of our duties. And that's to give our administrator his job and what we want from him and not, and, and stop there, yes. So that's how I feel personally. That's what I, I want to state for the record on that. So I just, I want this board to stay within its rules here and not step outside of that. So if we have an issue other than that, communicate with our administrator. And go from there, so.
I might just add, I think that's exactly what we'll do. Is went to the administrator and he brought up his concerns.
I agree. All right, any other discussion? Not all in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Great seven zero. All right, any other commission comments? All right, not, we are up to our action item. We have our treasurer and finance director on the agenda here for a presentation on our other stuff. So, all right, let me get you away.
Wait for Kathy to come up. So good morning, everybody. This is the Michigan Community, I'm sorry. There we go, Financial Dashboard that is hosted by the Michigan Department of Treasury. These are illustrations in a way and reports that are designated from a audited municipalities F65. It's a report that is published to the state in a form that basically gives a summary of operations. We can look at all 83 counties and. Get through. Just get behind it.
That's right.
I click it. Yeah.
The link's also under our, if you go to the county website, treasurer, there's a little link on our website or our webpage.
Yep. Looking at Leonard County on the right hand side of the screen there. You see the population of 23,000 and this is for 2024. We don't have 25s because we're still in 25. So this was just updated a couple of months ago. It shows Leonard County budget for all county level operations. To be 43,310,000 and expenditures to match. If you look at the snapshot, the total taxable value. We're at 3.95 billion. Our unfunded pension was reported at 5.72. The. Total general fund expenditures. So general fund revenue. You can see we had a slight surplus last year. The general funds unrestricted balance is about 46%. The long term debt, 5.74 million is trending downward. Our general fund cash ratio. Is. Out to be discovered. We'll get into that in a minute. General funds, but we'll get down to analytics. Here's how they rank us based on, you know, a scale of one to 100. Indicating 100 being a strong position and one being a weak position. If we look down here. We're not, you know, in the top. You know, 100 for our general fund ratio. We're not in the top. For our. General fund cash balance. Our pension health. Is the 31st out of 79. Our net position is 29 out of 78. And partly that is, we don't report. All our assets on the balance sheet, for example. Like, I don't know if we have. County parks improvements and stuff like that. And, and that's why I wanted Kathy up here is to qualify my statements. We don't have land as an asset on our books anywhere, do we?
They are on our depreciation schedule as a whole. And we would refer to the audit document to see if that is picked up as a capital asset.
All right, and I, we'll have to just, you know, look at that in detail. But today what we're going to look at is the revenues. For Leonard County, broken down by fund, we can look at. Different segments. The general fund is what we're going to look at today. And out of the general fund. The 20.63 that was reported on our F65, where did it come from? 64.38 was tax revenues. Federal grants, which includes ARPO. 12.23.
Sure like to be able to see this.
You can pull it up on your tablet yourself.
Could you give us a chance?
Yeah, that's fine. Sure.
Because this isn't just little stuff.
Yeah, I apologize.
So this is on the state of Michigan website?
Yes, sir.
So I'm on the cover and I saw everything and how did, how'd you get to this page then?
All right, so if we go back.
I think it's on our county website.
Yes.
Yeah, if you go to leonard.gov under the treasurer department.
Yep.
It's under financial dashboard.
I don't know where you're going. Go back up to the home screen.
Just treasurer Leonard County.
Our website. Shouldn't.
Okay, and then go to what?
Financial dashboard.
All right, so on the top left right here, you want to make sure you're on the 2024 fiscal year. You were going to want to highlight the county outline, the Leonard. And then it'll populate on your right tab. Right through to the page is the. Revenue and expenditures as reported by the F65. I went to revenues, hit explore, and it brings up. Basically, where is it from? How is this fact? Leonard County, broken down by. We're going to look at the general fund. Everybody follow? So I pulled up tax revenues. Those alone. If we want to look at them over time. Show you that. We had 9.31. That is for. Fiscal year 10, 2010, and since then, we have increased to 13.28 per 24 fiscal year.
And that's obviously.
Transfer sales, buildings, exa. Splits, name it. So going back to the general fund. Snapshot. So switch it back to snapshot and then general fund. Federal grants, I was saying, went to public safety and it was ARPO. We're not going to have that moving forward. State grants. State revenue sharing makes up a significant portion of it. Along with. State grants for health. Then other aid and grants is about 330. Three. Take a pause here. Basically, what we need to understand in this budget process is. When we allocate a manage and the tax will improve that. We don't start collecting any of that revenue until July. We have to make that work. So our fiscal year for collection is July to June. We don't get everything in until March, basically. Settlement makes up the difference, but. Now, February for everybody else and then you get a little bit in March for settlement. So when we do have a fund balance and you run a report at 1231. The remaining fund balance is what we need to finish the year until we can collect them. So when we use fund balance forward in any of our. Funds or operations and stuff like that work, we're reducing our ability to use that in the future. And it may be timing. So timing is part of the CIP and working with. Kathy, working with the treasurer's office and, and working with the board to adopt and to plan out when to tackle these projects. Because we are flush. You know, August, now we have. Quite a bit of money in. But as the year goes on, we draw that down and, and we have to kind of survive. If we put all of our expenditures in the first quarter of. The next fiscal year, we don't have a lot of resources to draw from. So we're using investments and money market accounts to fund these projects. Working together, we can find a lot of room, not only for better efficiency, better cash management. But also understanding, you know, the pie chart, understanding, you know, what makes up your general fund budget. And. Like I said, 64% is general fund taxes. Interest and rents. Came up almost 400,000 last year. I believe that's mostly my 664.
Yeah.
So that's money markets, all that stuff. We weren't planning on that, but we used it to make ends meet. And I keep that budget low when I present revenues to you because one market may change, you may pull it. You know, because we don't have a CIP, you know, and I may not be able to earn interest on that. There's so many unknowns that I can't tell you that I'm going to make you $400,000 every year. We're drawing our funds down. That's going to get smaller and smaller and smaller, but we're using it today. If you look at your last budget amendment, we increased it. Why? Because I budget low and the revenues are coming exceeding that. So we're to date to par. But we've used that increase in the revenue to offset an expense somewhere. And that's where we as a board, we've got to have a better understanding of how we approach these things. You know, we, to Jim's point, he wants the budget a little higher. And I agree that to, to an extent, we could increase the revenue projections.
You're talking about property taxes.
Property taxes, interest, stuff that we, you know, be speculating. And I think to Jim's point, yes, that would reduce the fund balance forward. That would also reduce the need for contingency, et cetera. But when we budget. Full exposure and we modify our existing budget. To accommodate that in an upcoming year. So if we, for example, made expenditures in 2025. That we're going to pay for with a levy that has to last us 25 through 26. That is eating up our future. Use of those funds. And it was the board's choice and they, and they did that. But I don't think you guys understood the consequence. That was like next year's money that you paid for, you know, the raises. That was like next year's money that you paid for, you know, the raises. There's a lot of transparency and communication that we as a group could offer. And, and through these budget sessions, it is drilled down and understand, you know, what the tax revenues look like, you know, and what the grants look like. And, you know, and offer, you know, I don't have much to present other than this. We bring in tax revenues. We overestimate our general fund collection. To an extent to absorb for like a three percent increase usually, or what was?
Two and a half to three.
Yeah.
I think is what we have been doing.
Yep, and when the next year's levy and taxable is identified. So for twenty twenty six, we will identify in the spring what the levy will be and what our taxable will be. You guys approve that. Then it's Kathy and the finance, you know, to adjust that amount, amend the budget. And, but I don't know, Kathy, can you explain? When you, in the past, was it practiced when we did increase those that we would reduce the fund balance forward?
Yes, yes. And anticipating this conversation, I did go back and picked up adopted budgets from two thousand eighteen through twenty four to get a better idea of when we are bad, when we are budgeting, you're, you're balancing your revenues against your expenditures. So if you know your revenues are going to be X for your property taxes, which we can tell by taxable value during, with current tax rate. We put what we know in the budget and to balance, we lean, we use fund balance forward so you have a balanced budget against your expenditures. In two thousand eighteen, to balance your approved budget, you approved a fund balance forward use of just over a million dollars. In twenty nineteen, you approved one point two million of fund balance to balance your revenues against your approved expenditure budget for that fiscal year or that calendar year. Twenty twenty, it was just shy of eight hundred and seventy five thousand to balance your revenues. That's what you know versus what you are going to, you've approved to expend. Twenty twenty one, it was over a million. Twenty twenty two, it was one point six million. Twenty twenty three, one point five million.
Are those final?
These are the adopted budgets for each of these years.
But you're including our.
No. In twenty twenty four, just shy of a million. Then if you look at your fund balance forward that I have provided to the board in an email. If you actually look at fund balance in that same timeframe going from two thousand eighteen, you thought you, you approved an adopted budget to use one million dollars. In twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, you actually increased your fund balance by two hundred thousand. So your revenue that you did realize was sufficient to reduce the lean on fund balance to the point that you had a surplus and you built your fund balance.
Yeah.
You agree?
Yeah.
So this is a funding tool, and I just redid my MGFOA class yesterday about fund balance. How much should a local unit have? It is used for fiscal, for governments like ours, county governments, to balance your approved budget for the next fiscal year because of timing of your property taxes. They know, and we collect in advance. We collect now in twenty twenty five for the year twenty twenty six. But we're not going to get all that money until January, February, March, and the settlement out of DTR in April or May. So to get you a balanced budget that you can approve for operations going into twenty six, you balance by using your fund balance forward. Now, how much is a good fund balance? How much should you have? In going through your risk tolerance, you do need to know your upcoming how much savings you feel comfortable with. The MGFOA says for small governments, they have seen thirty to fifty percent targets. And if we use an eight, I'm rounding our proposed budget right now, we're not done with it, but if I round our proposed budget, general fund to eighteen million, a fund balance would be nine million if that is where this board feels comfortable maintaining your savings account, which is your fund balance. MGFOA also says very small governments can be thirty to fifty. I did a thirty percent calculation. That would put it at five point four million. You're currently sitting with just shy of, and I just collated my papers. You're currently sitting with a fund balance and in the seven million dollar range.
Yeah.
Just shy of eight million. So you are between the thirty and fifty percent target. Very large governments might only have a five to ten percent on a one point eight million. That would make us around, you know, very minimal. I don't think any of us would feel comfortable with a small fund balance because we need the cash flow
Yeah.
to help us get to the next tax collection. And then at GFOA, in its best practices document, which was referenced by your speaker the other day, they say two months. So I did a two month on eighteen million, that'd be a three million dollar fund balance. That's not sufficient. So you do want to maintain a fund balance that is sufficient to help you balance to get to your next tax collection. So.
I think the math works out. We're, we're at forty six percent today.
Yeah, so we're between the thirty and fifty percent that MGFOA is recommending. I think that that's comfortable. You will use it to balance this budget. But as we know, and you can, we can have theoretical conversations about, gosh, where do we think our taxable value will go? Where do, you know, and it is a crystal ball issue, but we have traditionally budgeted conservatively, use fund balance forward to balance the budget so we can spend. Our first expenditures will be January second this year. It's a payroll. So we need to be ready to go with a operational budget. Does that help?
When, when is it supposed to be forty percent or fifty percent or whatever percentage it's going to be? Are you talking January first or December thirty?
I would say probably July thirty or June thirty.
Well, and your fund balance, you carry that annually. It balances your assets and liabilities.
So that's when you're talking about this percentage?
Measure, yeah, that measurement would be ended.
End of June or July, not at the end of the year.
No, because end of the year, we've got two thirds of the collection done. Now, so we haven't overstated balance for, for the moment.
Right.
You know, but we're going to use it. It's all restricted.
John, I'm, I'm looking at page one of our, of our big budget.
Yes.
Executive summary. Current taxes were for, we're listed at twelve, seven, seven, six, two, six, four.
Yes, sir.
And then for twenty five, it's thirteen, three, eight, five. What, how, how, how do, how do we account for the change and what's that based on?
Well, we take twenty fours, we do a two, three percent increase. And we push that forward to the twenty five budget because all the thing we're guaranteed is probably the cost line increase. You know, the minimal increase in taxes that are allowed. So we budget based off of that on the previous year's taxable because it's purely speculation. If I suppose that it's going to be three point nine billion or four point three billion, we'd be misleading you and overstating our resources.
And then in May of this year, when the taxable value was brought forward by equalization with the heavily rollback millage, I did a budget amendment to reduce the impact on the fund balance forward. Put the actual levy in of what's on John's warrant, which is thirteen million, six eighty five. And then when John submitted his revenue figures for twenty six, he put the full twenty six or, excuse me, this total revenue he's collecting now on his warrant as collected taxes, current taxes, and this is where he has a delinquent two and a half percent figure that he laid into this budget, which.
It's accurate.
And then what we'll do is in May of twenty six, we will get another final number from equalization. A new heavily rollback will amend the budget again in twenty six, and lessen the impact of the balancing act, and I don't mean to use it of the, and reduce the impact on fund balance forward. And if you are to look at the document that I give you with regard to fund balance forward, and if we look from two thousand fourteen going forward on the general fund, and that's in the lower left hand corner, from fourteen to fifteen, fund balance did decrease, it decreased in sixteen, it decreased in seventeen. It went up in eighteen, up in nineteen, down in twenty, up in twenty one, up in twenty two. These are surpluses that you underspent and did not use fund balance forward. You use it to balance your budget for the purpose of adopting an expenditure budget for your next calendar year. Twenty two to twenty three, you had a slight decrease, but then twenty three to twenty four, you had a surplus. And twenty four to twenty five, you had a surplus again. I can identify the surplus in that you did not spend your full contingency light item, which you always will have, you should have in a budget for unexpected expenditures. And we did not consider making a typical extra contribution to MERS.
And that's where, I mean, the bigger conversation is, is, you know, we used to in the past have that, that dialogue at the end of the year and say, hey, we haven't adjusted interest yet, or we haven't adjusted this yet. We're going to adjust it and then we're going to pay, you know, MERS, that additional money that came in.
It's usually a fall, it's a fall discussion in the fall.
Your projections assume that there were no homes bought.
Correct, sold.
No uncapped practice. So clearly as a.
It's a bare bones. That's what we got last year, you know, let's work within that. You know, if we go beyond that, it's speculative. I don't want to put my name on it.
So we're mainly conservative about.
Yes. Yes.
And the other thought process is if you want to reduce your savings account and go below a thirty to fifty percent target, then you certainly could budget and use fund balance. That is a board decision. Do you want to? But where's the comfort level of that savings account that you have to help us between each collection, one year to the next?
To your point, so if we got a comprehensive financial plan, like a CIP integrated with a five year budget, we would be able to then manage our cash because we would know, well, fund balance is X, but we're only going to dip here, here, here. And God, we may actually have a surplus one year and be able to attribute to the pool and manage the fund balance that way. And that's kind of what you do with the fund balance forward is you're allocating just little teen bits of this, bits of that, and rolling it into one number.
I agree, we might not budget conservatively, but, but I also don't want us to be doing it wrong. Last week when we met, it almost sounded like we weren't going to be able to maintain our parks and keep our staff. And so we, we need to be realistic enough so that we can budget responsibly.
Yeah, I think you're, and your biggest asset is your human capital around here, the people that work for the county. That's your biggest expenditures in wages and benefits and, and so, but then projects come on board. The, you know, DTR will be evaluated for surplus to see if projects should be funded through there so that you maintain a healthy level of savings in your general fund balance. So this is, this is all good information. I think that we also know we don't have crystal balls. We also are somewhat aware, but not always aware of taxable value assets that may come off the tax roll. I think sugar loaves to mind. That could be significant.
We have a million dollar uncapping still out at the court. You know, that's going to swing, that'd be heavy rebuild.
That will be on the DTR jump or the DTR fund balance, which we watch that very carefully as well because that's the savings account for the revolving tax issue so that we can keep our municipalities.
Current surplus from previous years of interest and operating that delinquent process. So it has grown. Kathy has demonstrated on her sheets. It's eight seven, seven, three, eight.
And a surplus.
Yeah. And we had, yeah, it was almost a three hundred and forty thousand dollar surplus from last year to tax.
If, if I may, I, I, I'm, it is a big balance.
Yes.
And I think your concern, and I think it's a legitimate concern, is although we may realize as a board and as, and as officials that those revenues are going to come in higher.
Yes.
That's, that's unacceptable. Because it's a balance, we can't ask you as a financial, as financial consultants to, on the revenue side, be more accurate unless we're going to be more accurate on the expense side. If you make one step on one side and you don't do it on the other, you set yourself up for calamity, if you will, if, if we have unexpected expenditures, if we have, if we have things that, that come up that, that aren't budgeted. So I, I understand where you're coming from, and that makes perfect sense. I'm glad to have that conversation. I think it is important to understand that while our fund balance may be staying relatively stable, our expenses have not been staying relatively stable. So as a percentage of fund balance to expenses, I had run those numbers before and they have gone from fifty seven percent in, in the two thousand twenty two audit to fifty one percent in the two thousand twenty three audit. I had forty eight percent. I, I'm not sure where, if, if, as a matter of timing, forty eight or forty six in our last audit. John, when you had come before us before, you had talked about structural deficits. And I think that's what we're trying to avoid here.
Yes.
Or at least as Kathy points out, if you're going to reduce your, your fund balance, do it in an intelligent way, in a, in a, in a planning way, rather than approve, approve budgets and make expenditures without realizing what you're doing to the long term fund balance health.
And may I also add, you know, it is just an opinion that I, I don't think we should be paying, you know, operating expenses like payroll, supplies and stuff from fund balance. It should be for MERS contributions, that retirement, capital improvements, stuff like that. So when we look at fund balance forward like that, we know what's in there.
And that's how you added it up with your surplus from twenty four to twenty five is that it was not the operations like John is speaking of, the wages and these office supplies. It was, you can identify it that it was from unspent contingency. You can identify where it comes from.
But, but as our expenses, it's like, it's like comparing how much money a, a family has in the bank for an emergency ten years ago with how much they need in the bank today. The, the ratio has changed dramatically and, and it's changing for us. And I, I, I say that over that period of time, I'm not referring that ours has changed dramatically. But over time, it, it is eroding. It has eroded a bit. And we just need to take that into account in our budget decisions.
And that is a good, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I was going to say, and that's where, you know, we talk about the comfort level of the thirty to fifty percent of your operational budget, which will go up every year, and then you would hope that your fund balance would follow. So you stay in that thirty to fifty percent range for small government in the state of Michigan. So right now you are in that range and it, you had a surplus. A few years ago, I remember we did have a surplus. A few years ago, I remember we did have a surplus in DTR and two hundred and fifty thousand was sent to the general fund to make the MERS. The MERS extra contribution. So, you know, we're balancing the fund balances between the two large pots, so to speak. The five sixteen, which is DTR and the general fund.
And and we, you know, last week or the week before, we had asked, you know, if that revenue from the DTR could be a placeholder for capital projects. You know, and if we want to do that, we all have to agree with it because in the past we use it for MERS, we use it for heat pumps, we use it for all this stuff. And we're gonna draw that down to a sub operate level at some point. So it's just about the transparency and working together with intent. And having everything from the administrator down to the department heads where we're all on the same page and working towards the same goal.
And the fund balance savings account in the general fund, it it is for operations where the fund balance in DTR. There's a comfort level for the treasurer to be able to pivot on that money to make the municipalities whole. So that they have their operational money in the fire and rescues, the libraries and whatnot. There's a comfort level there. And we could, there's no budget for five sixteen, that's your fund.
Yeah.
So to do the same math, you know, like I can do with the general fund fund balance as a percentage of your operational expenditures. There is a a comfort level and John and Sarah know each year how much is traditionally settlement amounts that they pivot on. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's been up to, you know, four point two million dollars one year. You know, so we have to, and that was coming out of like oh eight. We still have a lot of, a lot of debt out there and, you know. But like I said, we have that uncapping in there. So if I have a settlement that averages four, three, three to four million. And I have an uncapping and I gotta repay, that's a million, if I don't have the cash, I gotta go to the general fund. If the general doesn't have it, I gotta go to DTS, which is delinquent tax anticipation notes. It's fine, it's all structurally the stuff we can do, but we've just gotta be intentional and transparent and not reactive. And so, I mean, to bring the conversation back, I mean, today was supposed to be about revenues. We have very little to say about it. I mean, we can stay within our means, we can apply for grants. But most of our programs are funded through the income or the property taxes that we collect.
Sure. Mr. Elgar, she's had a rant up for a while.
Actually, I just put it back up.
Oh, go ahead.
I I did some exploring on the on the website and and not on the revenue side, but on the expense side.
Yeah.
You can, you can do a per capita expenditure by function.
Yeah.
And I think it'd be helpful for this board to see by function how much we're spending. And compare that with all other counties that might resemble us.
Yeah.
Because when I did it, it looked like some were were maybe underfunded and and some were maybe overfunded. And and it would at least be good information to look at.
Well, from a management standpoint, I mean, you're you're looking at efficiencies, you're looking at, you know, efficacy. You're looking at, you know, just public administration, you 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 have the public's trust. So you want to make sure you're doing, so you're doing a good job of them. One thing we've never done is measured ourselves against anybody because we're an island.
We don't, we don't wanna be the the bottom expenditure per function.
No, we don't.
Be the most expensive function either.
I would agree.
If it's okay, I would, I would like to ask that we request that we get all of our functions. And our per capita expenditures and and maybe all the counties are ten, twenty.
Okay.
Would that be okay?
No, I think it'd be not necessarily all counties, but counties that resemble us in the greater area here.
Well, off this dashboard, it's.
Yeah, this dashboard is available. You can pull up any county you want, which we do in our office quite often. We look at Antrim is kind of our size, but you look at their general fund expenditure budget. And you know, we're about eighteen million, so you don't want to compare us against a a county that has a hundred million dollar budget. It's it's very different.
Well, I mean, if you if you go to grant drivers, you know, you still have metrics. You have a county of ninety six thousand people. You have revenues and you have expenditures. That's interesting, zero. They must not have uploaded something correctly. But you're able to be, you know, say, well, if they can do like a function like treasurer. They can do ninety six thousand citizens parcels, which they have a bigger county than we do. And they can do it for X amount of dollars. Why is John doing this much? Oh, is he doing better than you doing worse? Is it just, these are just management, you know, tools to to measure and understand. And then maybe just simply ask the department, what what is different? You know, then it'll help you justify their expense needs for overtime, travel. That, I think, is the curb discussion that could aid everyone in getting a better handle on how to fine tune a budget. And have something to measure against to to drive a metric, to drive decisions. If we never look at ourselves in the mirror, how are we making these decisions?
And when we do the per capita expenditure, it kind of balances out the population differences.
Yeah.
That's that's the question.
So. One of the things that when we talk about your funding. And the balance that we have. I have to remember and I have to remind everyone that we still have people. Who donated their share of the ARPA funds to the rest of the county trusting. That if they needed funding. So they would get broadband. The county would be here. And the B grants have not yet been announced. But it's not a good story that they gave their money to everyone else. And everyone else shuts them out and says, well, sorry, we appreciate your donation, your sprit. I don't want that to be a story and I'd be very willing to write that letter to the editor. So we have to keep that in mind as we consider the fact that our balance with you is high. Yes.
I would suggest that if that could be ascertained as to the amount would be needed for that. It would be allocated through the CIP. And phased down whatever year contract could be obtained. And if the funding.
I don't think it has to be on the CIP because the rest wasn't. Because we don't have to put it up.
But we're using internal funds, you're not using ARPA funds.
Don't tell me that it has to go on the CIP.
Well, it can't, it would have to be, it would have to be a project by this board. And I mean, you put it on the budget.
So I would be willing then to make the motion that it be on the CIP right now. I mean, I, but it sounds like you're telling it, you gotta give me one.
May I just add just one thing, and that is. This is a project for which, you know, county does not own the infrastructure.
Right.
I do not believe that we can put it on the CIP since this is, these are independently owned lines. For which we have no long term control, so I I just don't think you could.
It's not a fixed asset of the county.
It's not a fixed asset that we own.
We're kind of digressing from our.
I just needed to make that point that we don't forget, guys.
We'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Yeah, the CIP, that's already passed and done. I think that's something that should be on next year's. Because that's, I mean, there was a deadline we gave to our nets to submit to the CIP and I don't think, you know.
Go do NASCARs. Just don't forget everybody.
Where's your money?
Yeah, well, I guess I'm I'm looking at the the budget, the expenditure summary. And I'm not quite understanding how it works because it talks about the budget role, you know, from the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six. And then it talks about department changes or requests. Some of them, some of those numbers look like the request for the full budget and others look like the changes. But I don't know which ones are which. I mean, it is.
The column that you're going to be looking at is the far right department changes or requests. So we'll take the first line item, Board of Commissioners Department. Right now, the adjusted budget for twenty five is at eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The predominant department change request of eight hundred and eleven reflects the current staffing level of that department.
Okay, so my question is, are we adding eight hundred and eleven thousand to eight hundred and seventy nine thousand?
No, no, no.
I don't think so, but then if you go down to to, like, let's just say. You know, some here where you're adding, it it's a whole different number and completely. You know, changes. So so what what is twenty twenty one or twenty twenty five rolled to twenty twenty six?
That was what the department heads looked at when they got their budget packets. And they said, gosh, you know, my budget, my amended budget for twenty five is this amount of money. I need to have a bit more travel, I need to, you know, if it's just a small amount, you know, or a large amount, it's in their narrative. So it is reflective of the the twenty, the department change far right column reflects the projected. Budget for twenty six that is reflective of the current staffing level, approved contracts or. Non-union at the time.
Some of them are higher, some of them are exactly the same.
Correct.
But but really, the budget we're looking at is the far right column.
It is, and if you look on the last page, it's at seventeen five. And your revenues using fund balance are the same, seventeen five. So your revenues are balanced to your proposed expenditures at this point.
So we're looking at overall projecting lesser budget than than if we just rolled over twenty twenty five.
Correct. Now, your budget in twenty six will, I've given you an updated schedule. And I added a section on page four to tell you what wages are included in the twenty six budget and which are not. So what is included is the Teamster because it was ratified and done early in twenty five. So we did pick up those wage increases at three percent, it is baked into the budget. Your FOPLC contracts through Corrections, Road and Dispatchers are not included in the twenty six. Because they were just recently ratified except for one. And those will be baked in when we do a final proposal for you. I can give you an estimate that with these contracts, it'll probably increase. I don't know the end result of dispatcher, but we're going to be somewhere between an eighty five thousand to a hundred thousand dollar increase. To put in those wages and the new retention schedule that was adopted in those negotiated contracts. Another item that is not baked in is your POAM. The negotiations will be starting soon, so we may know more as going forward. And what is also not baked in and is usually the last wage increase that the board will direct us to do. Is what you want your non-union wage schedule to look like for twenty six. It's usually the last to be adopted. So I just wanted to bring those, that page to your awareness that those numbers are not baked into this budget yet. So there will be an an additional lean on fund balance to balance because your expenditures are gonna go up. Every time you make a decision on operational budget, at this point, your lean on fund balance is going to get bigger. Historically, to adopt a budget, we have done a fund balance forward. Lean of a million dollars roughly over if I average it.
Yeah.
But if you look at your fund balance forward on general fund, that summary I'm giving you. You've had surpluses and not used fund balance. In the end, when we amend the budget for the realized revenue that will come. When we get equalizations number will come when we get the military rate for twenty six or, yeah, twenty six, which is really to fund twenty seven. But we use the cash in that current year.
Yeah.
So it is, it is a cyclical process. It is one where the board and I, I was very happy that we are in the thirty to fifty percent range for small government. With a fund balance on the general fund and. We're closer to an operational budget than you think. Because if you look at that summary I'm giving you, we have just a few items that are actually general fund expenditures. The rest of them are almost all capital projects. And we could get to the point where your operational budget is hammered down pretty quick. And then you can take and discuss what capital projects you'd like to look at for twenty six and how you're going to fund those.
The problem, of course, is if you're zero out on your general fund budget. All you have is is your delinquent tax to fund your CIPs. And if you look at our CIPs, I didn't have them all up, I mean, there's multi million hour expenses there. So it's one thing to say, okay, we we funded our operations, but we didn't fund our future. And you can't just fund your operations without looking at your future. So I think that's being a little, no offense, but I mean, I think that's kind of a rosy picture to say, well. No offense, because I know you, you understand this and that and what you said is exactly true. But for us as a commission, I think you have to look at it and say, some of these CIP expenses. I mean, are overwhelmingly expensive compared to the revenue that we're gonna have to pay for.
That's why the bar has gone very clear.
Some of this stuff I don't think is gonna wait though.
Well, and the Chill Tower and the console projects, they are in your twenty five budget. We're hope, but they're probably not going to happen this year's. But those have transfers out of DTR already earmarked. So if we put that into the twenty six budget because they don't start this year, that's a mechanical process, basically. Because we know that that is a project that's underway. Another of the one, big ones on here is this new radio system. This is where you might do a lease purchase and you would use Motorola's money, not ours.
Like we did last time.
Like we did last time, spread it out over a number of years. I think the last project, it was spread over ten years, the radios only lasted seven. It's kind of like your Apple phone.
We can provide you with financing, you know, like scenarios to get commercial lines or something like that, but they're, they're very.
The Leland Dam, is that, is that definitely a twenty six? I mean, I I don't know. Little bit of maintenance, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
No, I think he's looking at the CIP. You're, yeah, and that's not on this list. We have a question about that because I'm not sure what that really is about on the CIP. And we can't find the origin document to understand what is that. Because quite a few repairs have been made to the dam in the last few years. We put in a hydraulic, they're doing a survey, a diver survey coming up to look at the health of the dam. So I, there's a question as to the origin and what is that request?
Mr. Russell. So and and Kathy said, we're almost there because of our budget, but. So I said on the board, how we do the budgeting and if we just take where we are and then ask the question, what do we need to add? And and that's why I'm asking for that efficiency stuff. Because I I don't think just asking each department. Because I, I don't think just asking each department, can you hold a line or you need someone else is the way to do it. I think is take a look at, are there some efficiencies we can build in? And really make some significant increases for our capital improvement planning. And maybe some efficiencies in our departments. And I'm, I'm not saying we ought to look at all of them, but I, I do think we haven't looked, at least in my 10 years here, about how expensive our departments are or aren't compared to what other programs are doing, a pretty good job are doing. And I think we need to do that.
And I think you have a schedule, Lauren is maintaining a schedule of department heads to come before you. And I, I'm not sure in the sequence of, of meetings when that starts, that's Jim and Lauren will fill you in on when you'll be seeing those people too.
Sure. You know what? This has just been bugging me on the thing that you handed out today. And in previous things, it says lunchroom conversion to exercise room. That's never been discussed here.
That is in the narratives from the Buildings and Grounds Department. It was a request and that's in the section called supplemental information.
We haven't made that decision.
No, it was a request from a department head.
I think we need a vote of all the people. I mean, it's nice to have a bunch. I think we need a vote.
If you don't mind, I got some questions just as far as the, the revenue summary, just looking through these, the, especially the current taxes, just looking at from 2022 audited all the way to 2024. A quick question as side notes, um, do you have, or is it easy? Would it be easy to put a column in there of what was budgeted for 2025?
I could get you that.
That way, because then we can compare, okay, what was budgeted and then what was, what do we have to amend? So we know, okay, it's something, you know, yeah. We budgeted low and we overspent, so we know how to budget this year kind of thing, I think it'd be wise.
Well, you budget to your warrant and you adjust in the spring to the new taxable value and the new.
Right, no, but I'm talking about the whole revenue side of things, what we budgeted for.
He's looking for the original budget.
Right, the original budget that was approved last year to compare to what we actually so far year to date and what we amended for.
On one sheet of paper.
Well, it'd just be another column on this revenue.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, what I can do is, it'll be a one through seven revenue summary, but it'll include a column for approved budget.
Right.
Yeah.
That was, that way we know what was budgeted and then what we had to amend, so we know kind of where we're going.
I can send that to you in a PDF and a hard copy will be on the dais for the next meeting.
Um, and then just to continue on that, then for like the current taxes, as you see in the 2022 audited all the way to 2024 audited, we, every time we went over a million. Um, and then for 2025, um, it's looking like we're, you know, a little less than a million. But then for what we're budgeting is even less than that. What's the, you know?
Well, you gotta, that's why I wanted to have this conversation is, is what do you guys want? That's subjective. And we, we can.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, question.
Go ahead. I read section 15, one D of the Michigan Uniform Budget Accounting Act. The recommended budget shall include at least the following section, an estimate of the revenues by source of revenue to be raised and received by the local unit. What we're doing is we're simply rolling over last year's budget. We are not doing anything, anything sort, anything close to an estimate of what our revenues are going to be. And if you look at the history since 2022, you've gone up at least half a million dollars, sometimes a million dollars more than you budgeted. The budget is $2,754,000. $2,754,000 in your 2025 budget, you've already amended it to 13,000, 13,385,000. The, the, the equalization report that you received in May projects 13.7 million dollars in 2027 taxes. The idea that you budget to the warrant is not accurate. Budgeting act requires that you make an estimate and that estimate has to be based on something. And if you are under, if you are digitally underestimating your, your income, which is based, is somewhat out of your control because it is based on, on, on property tax, taxable values and on cappings of property that are going to occur after the equalization report that you got in May. So the idea that you simply roll over the budget from one year to the next, underestimates your, your, your income and then skews what you can do with respect to your budget on the expense side. And it also skews what you can do with your budget in terms of reducing taxes. So doing that does not give you an accurate picture of what your, what your budget's going to be. And we are not following Uniform Budgeting Act if we do just that. And I agree with Treasurer with respect to things like interest income. We had, what was, what was your interest income? What's your interest income per day? It's close to $500,000, I believe. And you're proposing a budget of $25,000. The question you need to be asking is not why is he only proposing $25,000? But what could you do to give him the ability to make sure that $500,000, you can accurately budget that dollar amount? Instead of saying, I don't know, I don't know what it's going to be because I don't have control of the cash. And the final thing that I would say is describing your fund balance as a savings account is 100% inaccurate. It is not a savings account. It is not what you have in the bank. The fund balance, if you were running a business, it would be your retained earnings. Your retained earnings may not reflect what your actual cash in the bank is. So it is not a savings account. It is a budgeting account. And you're, a lot of what you've heard today is confusing the difference between budgeting and cash flow. Those two things are completely different. Budgeting is estimating what your expenses and revenues are going to be. Cash flow is what you have in the bank and when you can use it.
Yeah.
Two different things. So.
My recommendation.
And I'm responsible. You appointed me as your chief financier, as your, as your budgeting official under the Uniform Budgeting Act. And I'm responsible for the budget that you adopt, not John, not Kathy. And I don't, I don't want to see a budget that underestimates income. So we'll, we'll, we'll work on getting you a better, a better estimate of what the income's actually going to be.
Well, and that, with that being, I mean, that was some of the questions I have in here, just, you know, one was, I mean, I highlighted a bunch of columns in here that I was going through. I mean, for the last week, the day and yesterday, and I mean, just going through some of the questions that I had that I wanted to ask as to why are we budgeting this? You know, because it's, some columns were going way up from what we historically have and some were going way down from what we historically have. So I was just curious what some of the changes were. One was the current taxes, you know, historically we're going up almost a million every year. But yes, we're going way low and I understand conservative, you know, want to stay conservative on this type of thing, but.
If I may clarify, I agree with.
Just a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
I don't want that either. Sorry.
I would agree with, uh, Minister Dyer that we have been using the revenues as a placeholder for the unknowns because of the lack of transparency and the lack of ability to work with cash with the board. So underutilizing the revenue in the budgeting process allowed for the reduction of fund balance forward use at the end of the year. That's practically how it's been done for 20 years or more or less. I would not be opposed to adopting and having a conversation with this board about increasing the budget for interest and for property taxes. But with that, to Michelle Campbell's point is there has to be better accountability on the expenditure side with timing. These are two different conversations, but they have to be developed in tandem. So, Mr. Dyer, I, I agree with you and I think that, uh, that these are good conversations to have.
Okay, well, the, the other column is like the National Park Tax Reimbursement. Like you went from 2022 to 100, you know, almost 122,000. Um, to 2024 audited, a little over 138. And year to date, we've had 142, but we're budgeting 135. Um, I guess what's.
Basically.
Are, are we expecting that to go down?
Some of those properties are coming out of the pilt. There's two that go to the township, I believe.
6902 and 6904, the dispersed ones. 6904 is a, um, sub, subsegment where when the National Park purchases an at-large piece of property, it will be on the tax rolls for five years before it comes off. And in that, it is a reduced payment, but they calculate it and give it to us through the 6904. We disperse it back to those taxing jurisdictions. If 6902 is the allocation for the National Park grant. So that is an allocation of the Department of Interior randomly moves the needle up or down per acre. And that's what we get paid off of.
So we're, so in other words, we're estimating that we're going to get less than what we.
Unless they buy more property, which we don't know.
So we're going to get even less next year than what we have this year from year to date is what the estimate is, you think? Like, that's what I'm trying to get to, to try to figure out where these numbers came from, I guess.
Yeah, I would say that 6902 is going to be solid, um, because that's not going to change, but just a minor fraction. Uh, the 6904 is going to be taken off, but that, it's, it's merely a pass through.
Yeah, because then like the local community stabilization, I know that's a very small amount there, but, you know, again, we're coming in way, we're doing substantially less than we even got in 2024. Just some of the questions I had as far as that we got, um.
That is appropriated by the state. I mean, we get a calculation and plug it in.
Like, and we get that. So, and then the other one, probate judge's salary on page two. We have, it went from 127, 2022 to, I mean, it gradually increased, but all of a sudden this year, we're, you know, we're budgeting substantial. So what's the reason for that, I guess?
New judge?
Is that what it is?
And, uh, don't dare to say. There's salaries. The state reimburses to you for the salary that you pay. On the revenue side, that's what that is.
Okay, so that's just, that's expected to be less than, that's the reason.
That was, yeah.
And it's set by the state.
Um, the other question I had is for secondary road patrol marine safety program. We, there's always been from my, from what it looks like, 2023 to 2024, with that money coming in, but we're budgeting zero for that. Any reason for that, I guess?
We currently don't have a grant approved yet. We don't, we haven't even applied for the 26 grant yet for marine. That's done in, gosh, February, I think, is when the undersheriff will come to you and apply. So we have no idea what they'll grant us. And secondary road, I believe it's on your agenda. It was, and it was submitted. So we, we still don't know that number for 26. We just, we just did that last month.
If we know we're wanting to submit a grant, are required by the Uniform Budgeting Act to estimate what that revenue from all sources is going to be if we officially apply for a grant and we officially get something, budgeting zero is not accurate.
Another one I have is district court costs where we're budgeting way less than what we're, you know, gradually what's been coming in kind of thing. I, you know, those are just some questions I had as to, you know, the reason why, you know? But then, for instance, like some of the items, you know, we got, we've been having less come in, but then we're budgeting more for it. But that's just, yeah. And I don't know, should I write those questions out because I highlighted a ton of them in here, you know, as to why, you know? And I don't want to bore everybody just going through line by line, but.
Well, I think at the bottom of page two, revenue sharing is from the state. John and Sarah put that number in and it's a state projection, so we use that state projection. That's higher.
Right. Yeah, no, that, I mean, that's just some of my questions, I guess.
We can take a five minute recess.
Five minutes recess? We can take a quick five minute recess.
Are you done with this?
I do for.
Okay.
Anyway.
I had great teachers, I had a lot of really great teachers.
They're both
Colored green. All right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I'm speaking about
You got resume?
All right, we're back in session.
No, I asked for a break just for a second, but, you know, today was about presenting the dashboard of revenues. I mean, the dashboard, you guys kind of can poke around yourself to understand, you know, some of those metrics that I'll be presenting with help with Sarah and Kathy on the cost per capita by function. What would the next steps be for this, this group? I mean, working with Jim, we can readjust the interest in projected taxable income or taxable revenue coming from property taxes, but is there anything else that I can help with as far as the revenue side goes?
Mr. Money, kind of stand up.
Yeah, well, I just, I just think that maybe we could start with the revenue and go through and do the projections. Do we do that, or do we just wait, let you go through and change them?
Guys?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I think what we owe you as an administration is a reasoned, data-driven recommendation for each of these. Some of them will be easy, because again, we may have a projection from the state as respect to revenue sharing. Some of the others will be more complicated, like the property tax estimate. We owe you a, we owe you a significant description of where, you know, what that, what that recommendation is based on, not just a guess. You know, because I could say, for example, you had for the last, since, for the last three years, you've had a 22% increase in property tax, or it equates to about a 7% compounded increase. So we could just simply say it's 7%. I'm not satisfied that that would be the accurate thing to do, however. A lot of it depends, the data that we want to look at is how many property, how many properties have been traditionally uncapped? We haven't really looked at that, because you get 100% of that uncapping when you have it. So, and that's the only way you're going to be in a position to really evaluate what you can do with respect to tax reduction, if you're really seriously looking at that as an alternative. To know what your revenues are going to be. If they're underestimated, you're always going to look like you have deficit, but you really don't.
Well, in that, that would be great, then we don't have to go line by line, but you put the changes in here under work sessions, as opposed to, you know, requests. Because that, actually, that's, I guess that's what confuses me, is that it says department changes, the request would really, I believe that's the proposed budget.
It is.
You know, so, so, you know, so then we would do the changes, and then we would do that, and you have to do that with expenditures, but I would like to also go through the supplemental information. I guess I want to start working on the budget, that, you know, it's great information, but I don't feel like we're moving forward with the budget. But I can, and that way we can look at if we can set money aside for interest, if we set money aside in capital improvements, for whether it's the roof or what's going to happen. But I'd like to have, you know, I really like John's idea about having a five-year plan. I mean, it might be too much to do this as this first budget that we're working on, but I think we should work towards that goal.
Yeah, the five-year is where you need to be for your cash flow, and I agree with Mr. Dyer that part of the discussion went through part cash flow, and a lot of it went through simple year-end numbers. And they aren't going to help you get cash flow. But we're not setting ourselves up to win any awards, only because we had Rebecca here last week and we're still kind of in the weeds. What Rebecca said is the first thing you need to do, and called this mandatory, is provide a budget message. I understand where you're going as far as from administrative standpoint. It's our job too, though. It's our job to really, it's our policy that, that drives this budget. And we've not come up with a budget message, which would help our administrator, who's going to also be living with this budget as everybody else in here. So I don't know if that needs to be like number one on the agenda for our next meeting. I understand that I'm new to this, and a number of us are. And, and maybe those who have been here have not thought of the budget in different terms, but I, I hear that indeed we are starting to look at it in different terms. So I'd like to see us work towards a budget message, goals, early, while recognizing that not all those goals may be accomplished this year, but we can start moving toward those goals.
I, we have always been very, very, very conservative as we do our budgets. But I want to say I like, but that's a really lame word. It's a good idea to budget on what you're actually going to get instead of what you got last year. So I think that's an important change. And as we talk, it occurs to me part of the reason for our big increase in, in the taxes coming in, which I realize have to balance prices and wages that have to go up and are going up. I sure hope we can, since a lot of it is because the increase in value of housing, the effect of that on our population is that people's children can't afford to live here. So as an offset to the increased money we get, because housing has become more and more expensive, I think that's a really good reason to stick it, to allocate some money to housing. 100,000, 200,000. The reason we're getting so much more is making it unaffordable for our people. So acting to support our people and help people actually live here, so that the people who work here can be a part of our community. And your children can get married and live here and raise their kids. I think that's a goal we should have.
Just to facilitate that, I mean, Mr. Dyer and I can meet with you and talk about contracting with the land bank authority to, you know, do affordable housing, and the board could contract and make an expenditure appropriation. So if that is the board's desire, we can look at that.
I think that's an important, important need and should be.
I think in 24, there was an allocation from CDBG to land bank, and it was in excess of 100,000, so that has happened. As an example.
And we've done good things in land bank.
Sure.
But they need more capital.
Yes, I have zero.
Land bank meetings have been canceled because there's
I have no property, I have no property.
The good news is no one's foreclosed.
That's right.
I would like us to accept Commissioner Campbell's challenge, and each of us draft a budget message for our next meeting in three years, and we can all present our budget message, so that we all hear what everybody's thinking about how we ought to be spending and saving, and, and I'll accept your challenge.
Did I challenge you?
But I won't, I won't accept your ready message for us.
I figure based off the conversation we have here, administration can come up with a message, and then we can hash it out, that's what I'm hoping for, but.
Why they need to give I would have no problem receiving drafts or input from US Board, you know, back, I would expect it. But it's been, it doesn't, you know, what you want, you want to work off of, off the craft, work off suggestions, it's okay.
I'd like you to have some new ideas.
That could be the direction here. Send our administrator language, that some of you want to have at the next meeting to go over, or just email it to?
I would just say email it to me, because really the message in some respects comes at the end of the process, when you've done the work, that, that it kind of recaps what it is that you, that you've accomplished.
And a few more questions, just on the revenue, on page five. I highlighted the interest term, too, as well, so we need to go to that. Just the miscellaneous reimburseals for 2022, we've got a minus there. Do we actually bring less in then? Maybe hopefully it's an error.
I can do a transaction history on that. I'll send it to you.
But then, like, for instance, donations, Kena specifically, nothing's budgeted, I totally understand that, because we don't have a Kena, so that, you know.
Then you're, you would be budgeting for an unknown donation amount.
Right, no, and I understand that part. There was a lot of minus in there that I had any questions on, but if administration, everybody wants to request, just give that modified. That would put my mind at ease, so. Any other commissioners have questions or suggestions or comments regarding this? Sarah, Kathy?
You know, just regarding the property tax issue, you know, it has been calculated as, to the numbers we know. And we are in discussion regarding theory, hypothesis, data, history for calculating a number to estimate a future amount. I'm, I agree about prudent, conservative, and best budgeting, so that if everything goes to hell in a handbasket, you know what the impact would be on your fund balance. I don't think that's going to happen. I think that it is a trend. We have higher taxable value. But it has been budget for what you know, not for what you don't know or what you hope for. I think that's quite transparent, but we are in discussion regarding that. And also, with regard to getting to expenditures, it might not be a bad idea for the board to consider our total operation, as Vice Chair Wessel mentioned, about essential services versus non-essential. Because this campus does provide for prosecutor, sheriff, treasurer, registrar, deeds clerk, the drain commissioner. These are essential and statutory, and then you have things that are not considered essential services that are part of your general. So just if that is something you want to keep in your mind as you're evaluating.
You know, it occurs to me, too, health department is being losing tons and tons of revenue. And some of those are services we may have to up our, our county contribution, Betsy and Wessel. Not a whole bunch, but some. They are the most frugal people in the world. Dance around on balancing a budget, and I don't know how they do it. It's, it's pretty amazing. But as we hone down to some very essential things that will be cut, that's something we just put in your mind, that we may have to up our contribution a little bit.
All right, John, any closing?
No, I think this is good conversation. I think we have direction. I look forward to working with Administrator and Kathy to present you with updated information. If there's anything in between that, feel free to let me know beforehand.
And if you would like, look at your CIP, the grid, because when I was looking at putting things on your worksheet for capital, I basically looked at 26 and 27, and then I used the budget narratives from your department has in your elected. If you would look out 28, 29, 30, 31, because it is up to you, your prerogative, if you see something that the Planning Commission recommended for If you see something that the planning commission recommended for out further, but you feel it's more of a priority and it's not on your worksheet. Please let me know because I did just pick the first two years and not wanting to go too much further out. But it's your process, your CIP and your budget worksheet. So if there's something out further that you think should be prioritized, please let me know and I can add it for discussion.
You might add, speaking of challenges. Maybe we should be challenged to create, to go through the CIP. The process might include having Administrator Dyer. Explain what, what are not, what are not. What would be required, what's on there that just needs to be there? And then having us go through and say prioritize our top 10 or whatever. Because as you say, this, we've had no input into the CIP at all. I think, I, I understand that AI was used to create the wonderful parks and recs. So that apparently that's how the, the paid parking lot for Veronica Valley got ahead of others. And I think park managers would have changed. So yeah, we need to, we need to involve ourselves into that process. And perhaps, as I say, the idea of, of x-ing some off as, you don't have choice on this. And then letting us go through and prioritizing our top 10 would allow. Process to move into the CIP decision-making a little easier. Easier entrance.
It is really appropriate to think of the CIP truly as a wish list or a placeholder for things that you may need to do. At some point in time in the future, it's intended to be a six-year. So there's nothing wrong with having something on there that you know, you're not going to do unless maybe you get granted or something like that. There's none, that's nothing wrong with that, but it is, what you're describing is really what you need to do. Operational budget. Mission of those items. Coming, to coming budget year. I think we're on the same page about that.
I didn't understand what you said about the operation. You're saying get your numbers so you know how much money is available for the CIP. And then use the CIP to fill in the back hole of whatever.
Yes. Based upon your priorities.
But first we got to have priority. And before that, you know, we kind of see how much money we might be able to extract.
Absolutely, but you would have items like whether you're going to have an exercise run, finding out converting the lunchroom. That would be, that's a good example of something that might go on, on the CIP. Consider at some point.
You know, also, if we are going to say we are tied down towards our CIP.
You're not.
Yeah, we're not.
You're not.
Good, because just because the CIP doesn't have the possibility. We've talked for years about the fact that we may have to go to. Or to cover the Amsterdam. And that's been something we've talked about for four, five years. That was just a possibility that will never happen. But realized that it might have to, so not being on the CIP. Because we, they never ask for our.
I, I, I'm sorry, I got to say this. It's not just that southwest corner of Leonell County that advocated or gave their, if you will, their ARPA funds.
Advocated.
For this project because I had, the villages all had service. What percentage of, wasn't it, I can't remember what it was, was it 80% of the county already had service? They didn't benefit from that.
No, 25% of people had inadequate or none.
Okay, 75%. Already gave, if you will, their ARPA contributions to this project. So to think that, that the folks who already had service should give more to what I, I don't, I just, I just don't believe that.
Well, now they have the choice of two.
We make the rest. I don't, I don't.
All right, Commissioner Wessel.
It would be, I, I would like to have the administrator come back with, from the capital improvement plan with things that must be done this year at the EBIT. Yeah, I, I think, I think there's some out here we still have a choice of, let's get that list, the shortlist. And, and, and then that goes into factor.
Yeah, fine with for that because you got to.
Do you know what it's like to live in this world with nothing?
All right, I guess, Kathy, anything else?
No.
Sarah, anything? Administrator, do you have anything else you want to add? All right, this be, I guess, so we're all on the same page, admission for next Tuesday will be after executive session, from my understanding. For a budget and is that the point where we got some department ads going in or what? Yeah, that way you just let the board know on that so we can look through the department ads that are going to be presenting to us. We can go up, read through that so we know which department ads are requesting, so we know some questions to ask and stuff.
What else is keeping on your list of those departments?
Right, and when they're scheduled. All right, thank you, Kathy and John, Sarah. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We want to public comment. We have none. Mr. Comments? All right, none.